Minutes, critical minutes from September tenth, twenty thirteen. There was an issue. Oh, that's right. Computer crash.
Correct.
Except financial reports from fiscal officer. Move to accept reports second. Roll call.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yeah.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DiCarlo?
Yes.
Amendments to the agenda. Because I do that here move, I'd like to move Resolution thirty-five, two thousand thirteen from table to regular, is that what I'm doing? Second.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
No.
Mr. DiCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King, I'm sorry, Mr. Condit?
Yes.
And I would like to have an executive session to discuss real estate.
Second. We'll do it after comments from the public.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DiCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Aye. Comments from the public, thirty minutes maximum time. Five minutes per person, state your name and address. Comment from the public.
Sorry, I'd like to approach the front because I would like to speak not only to council but to the people here, is that all right?
Sure.
Thank you. I'm Walt Hoffman, I live in Remiderville, three seven five five, South Side Circle. And I'm here not only as a resident but as a co-chair for the Blue Ribbon Committee. And as I hope most of you know, we do have a school issue that's coming up. And I wanted to briefly describe that issue and to answer any questions that you might have. First of all, I want to thank council in the past when they have supported the school and the endorsement that they gave to the last campaign. We're not asking for an actual endorsement this time because the situation has changed a little bit. Twinsburg has council seats that are being contested. You did not want the school district to get in the middle of their issue. And so we decided just on an individual basis, whatever support you can give our schools, it would certainly be appreciated. The issue that we're talking about is issue forty-four. It's a six point nine mil renewal levy. Now, that's important to remember that it is a renewal levy. A year ago, the people of Twinsburg and Remiderville and the township supported the school by passing new levy money. This is a renewal which means it will not increase your taxes. Your taxes will remain the same. A replacement levy is the one that increases the tax. We're not doing that. It is a five-year renewal, which means in five years you'll have an opportunity to vote on this again. So if you feel the money is not being utilized, of course, you can rescind it. Now, it raises four and a half million dollars for the school. And if we pass this levy, it means that the school will have a positive cash balance through two thousand seventeen, which is approximately the five years that the life of this levy will have. So it does finance the schools for the entire five years that it is intended to do. I've been had an opportunity over the last five or six weeks to be in the schools a lot. Open houses, student activities, games. And it's been a wonderful experience. You hear about kids getting in trouble, and you don't very often hear about all the kids that are doing good things. And we have an amazing bunch of students in the Twinsburg City Schools. I think if you saw them on a daily basis, as I've had the opportunity to do over the last four or five days, there would be a tremendous sense of pride. And I'm asking you to support this levy, which again will not increase taxes. But I'm asking you to support this levy so that we can give our teachers and administrators the resources they need to maintain the schools at the excellent level we now enjoy. So please vote for issue forty-four. It's for the schools, it's for the kids, and it's really for ourselves because obviously we have a good reputation with the schools and it helps our property values, and that all goes hand in hand. But the main reason to support the schools is that we want our kids to have the best. So please support forty-four. Thank you very much.
Jonathan Boyer, one zero two five nine, Clipper Cove. I almost feel bad to bring this up after that. But I do want to address Harrington Place. I think, I suspect that's why a lot of folks are here. And I've been to a number of council meetings before, sometimes I say a few things, sometimes I just listen. I want to suggest to the council and to everybody that's here that we focus on two major issues. I think there's a lot of people that are frustrated that want to talk about rain barrels, blue dye, trees, a lot of issues. To me, the issues are, number one, how are we holding the developer accountable for what I see and what I think many people see as a pattern of misbehavior, not following ordinances and other such activities? The second thing is, to the best of my knowledge, there are still houses being developed back there, and the water retention plan is inadequate and has not yet been addressed. And I know, and I'm not, you know, suggesting that the council isn't doing their very best to address that, and I appreciate everything that you guys are doing on that. But the fact of the matter is, there are still houses that are flooding. And, you know, from my vantage point, there's been more water back there than I've seen as long as I've lived there. So I just want to suggest some urgency on the water retention plan and that we focus on, you know, those two issues, which is accountability for the development and the water retention plan.
Thanks. I don't know who wants to address it, the Royal Shore's Homeowners Association.
I'll address one issue. Andrew Gordon, one oh three oh four, Clipper Cove. I know at the last meeting we talked about how we had sat down with the developer and he had agreed to let us hire an engineer and do an independent study. Well, just for the record, he has since rescinded that offer. And I think it was based on the fact that we brought an engineer in, we sort of showed him what we were looking for, said, "What do you need?" Says, "I need permission to go on their property." We emailed the developer, said, "We have an engineer, we need permission to go on your property." And he said, "Sorry, we're not going to give you that permission." And by the way, we rescind our offer to let you have an engineer on our property. So that to me says, he has something he doesn't want to say.
Why would you wait this long to tell me that?
We just found out a couple of days ago.
Well, that's like when you should call me and say, "Hey, Sam, he rescinded the deal that you brokered." Right?
Just for the record, that's what happened.
Okay. All right. Tom Oster or?
John Evans.
Tom Oster's who we're going to deal with.
Okay.
I mean, that's who, that's who we sat down with, and that's who we brokered to deal with.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm not going to deal with John Evans.
Okay. And I would recommend that you not deal with John Evans. Well, I'll just say that I believe the email was addressed to Tom Oster and the response came from John Evans. So you should know that. From what the engineers told us, there's something fishy going on.
Mark Felkamp, three eight two seven, Dallas Trail. Not only did we get cut off from Tom, or we've been cut off saying, "You can't do this," but I tried to get information from our own engineer, and I can't get it. And that, that's kind of, you know, they're telling me they don't have the information, which is fine. Actually, they're not telling me that. They're telling me that I need to go to the builder to get the information I need to give to the engineer to do, to find out if the calculations are, if we have the adequate retention ponds.
Okay. Do we have what he needs?
Yeah. Nobody's spoken to me. I have the calculations. I'm not happy with my numbers.
I, I just contacted Dave and was told that, no, I couldn't have that. I'd have to go to the builder Friday.
So do we have them here?
Yeah. Nobody.
Gene, do you want me to send the email from our engineer to your, to your attention? Because I have Dave's email from when he was here before. I don't have Gene's. I just assume they communicated together, you know, back and forth with each other.
Will you hear Thursday?
Yeah.
Can you come up Thursday and then get them forwarded?
Well, I'll have to get it right before.
It won't do any good, it's got to go to our engineer. It's the information our engineer places.
Well, then your engineer can pick them up Thursday.
It would be easier just to do an email, Sam. I'll shoot the information I need. Maybe he's not going to have everything that the engineer's requesting, which I can understand.
All right, CC me on this stuff. So I know what I've got to shoot.
I have your email address.
MayorSam24@AOL.com. It's real, it's pretty simple. Or if you type it in here or pop it in.
Who's our planning and zoning chairman?
Me. I'll send it all to me.
Where do you think, you know, Gene and I, at the last meeting, you and I and Gene looked at a map with a line drawn on it with two retention ponds on it. Where are we at with getting something to happen with that? I think that's, that would resolve ninety-nine percent of all these problems.
No, I'll give it to Oster. I'll work that.
Okay.
On it. But at the same time, I think what we're trying to do is trying to get your engineer to be able to look at it and say that would, whether he agreed on it or not, that that would work.
Okay. Okay. That'd be good. I'll shoot the email I sent to Dave, to Gene, and hopefully we can get something on on this. It's been six, it's a long six months.
I know. And, but I'll call Mr. Oster tomorrow.
Okay.
But at the same time, like if your engineer wants to call me and tell me what he's looking at, what he's looking for.
I'll, I'll send you, maybe this is the best way to handle it, Sam. I'll shoot through the email I got from him, request what his requests were, and then maybe you and Gene can get together.
Okay.
That would maybe be the best way to handle it. Is that all right?
Yeah, absolutely.
That sounds good. And I think the work you guys did do at the entrance helped out a lot. So I really appreciate that.
Sunday morning, I got up, went up, there was nothing, it was clear.
Yep.
I went and walked the entire behind Clipper. I went, say, two days before, I don't know, whenever the, the blue dye issue started, I went up looking for that, and I called the homeowners' property management in Harrington, which the gentleman lives on, Leonard Boulevard. And he said that he, you know, I told you to talk to you, and he's talked, and he said he knows Andy well from trying to set up something with you to be the property manager of Royal Shore's Homeowners Association. So he said, "Feel free to call him if you ever have any questions about the water and stuff like that." He uses AquaDoc. I got, so I said, "I need your MSDS sheet." So I got the MSDS sheet. It's blue dye, it's water, just what like you do with eggs or something to that effect. Nothing, there's no copper salt or anything like that. But it's, it's really simple. If you call me, I'll find things out.
Okay. I should do that email tomorrow. Um, thanks, appreciate it.
Anybody else?
Sammy Hodge, one oh three, one oh Clipper Cove. I'm, I'm just a little lost, I guess I haven't been in a meeting the last one, but we had like three meetings in the summertime, and there was this water variance we were, you were going to vote on. Whatever happened with that? Because I was told two stories, that they were given the variance and that they weren't.
They weren't given the variance.
They were not.
They were not given the variance.
So are there?
That's why we're still going through this, and that's why I asked them to bring in own, let you bring in your own engineer, look at what it would take to correct the problem.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So that's where we are today.
Sam, I have one, I'm sorry, Mark, Mark Felkamp, three eight two seven, Dallas Trail. I have one other question. We are all in agreement that those downspouts should not be pouring out on the ground, is that correct?
Right.
Okay, all right. That's my biggest worry.
Once they get that whole plan done, they will connect those into the sewer.
I, just a follow-up. Andrew Gordon, one oh three oh four, Clipper Cove. One is, we did some investigation into the rain barrels because now every house seems to have one. And the homeowners in Harrington did not, at least the ones we could talk to, did not ask for them. They said they just showed up one day and were installed, and that was that. So I know last time we had discussed that the developer said.
What section were you in?
Actually, it was Lori Boyer who went.
My wife.
What section?
What? It's the back section, Sam.
And that, she would have been in. Right, I'm talking about, you were talking about other ones at the time. When I drove down, I'm like, why do they even have a rain barrel in, as soon as you turn on Red Bud?
That's the street, I think she was in.
When you go down Red Bud, and that's what they said that they were, they purchased and they asked us to draw for it.
I asked Gene, "Please knock on a couple of doors." None of those people asked for the rain barrels. Which again, I get ties into the whole, they're not supposed to be dumping water on the ground. And obviously, if these rain barrels are connected, just dump water on the ground. So I mean, the other follow-up, I guess, is there's absolutely no way to just tell them, "Stop construction until it's taken care of. This is a violation of our code, and you can't move forward."
I don't know, I have to talk to the buildings, but I don't, I don't know. I guess, I'm not going to say my thoughts on it.
Yes. I mean, what is the village lawyer's opinion on it? I mean.
I'm going to do the same thing. I don't know the area you're talking about. Sam answered the question right the last time. Anyone could put a rain barrel on their property. I don't know specifically where these are. I would like to hear what Mr. Rodick would say also.
Okay.
You know, not knowing what, what the past history is, you know, were they approved, were they not approved? I don't want to.
I'm just saying, we're staying away from it. I know we talked about, they're on a different phase supposedly right now. And this is from a different phase so that you don't feel you can stop him on this new phase over violations on the old phase.
Since variance was never asked.
If I'm understanding your question right, you're asking, can we stop the, go ahead on the new phase because he's made some violations, and I don't know how many he has made? I would say note about it.
They haven't been, they haven't been given a variance, but at the same time, you know, you're saying, "I got a plan that's going to work," and that's what we're working through, and that's why I asked your engineer to look at it.
Okay.
There, there, you know, as a homeowners' association representative, you got to understand what you can do and what you can't do to, to, so say this in the correct fashion so we don't end up somewhere we don't want to be. What you can, what you can't do that doesn't create you being in a court of law. Now, some other time, you want us to talk over, we can talk.
All right.
Off the record.
Off the record. The reason I got so panicked about this was Bob Rodick at the meeting when they were here for the rain barrels, was when it told me if they don't get that approved, they're going to dump it on the ground. And that's when I started the panic. Just, so you're aware of that.
I understand.
What's the difference of dumping it on the ground naturally or having the rain barrels? These homes are twenty-five feet from my property. Now, twenty-five feet, what is going to be a door? It's going to come right into my property. How can we stop this?
Well, that's what I got to get back to you. I want your engineer to, to look at it, and I want Tom closer and then to page it and then I'm here.
By the way, my name's Mary Hallard, one oh three, one oh Clipper Cove.
In theory, just to get back to that, you're saying, it's not that it's supposed to stop all water from going to your property. Any, any amount of water that private development going in that was running to yours, we're trying to make it so there's no increase of water. That, that's what they have to comply with, that there was no increase of water.
It's a way so there's going to be increase.
I hear that. Right, so that makes their obligation just a little bit tougher, I would think.
Yeah. But I thought we agreed when we allowed them to build that they were going to self-contain all their water.
They have to self-contain the non-water that was equal to what was running off prior. They're allowed that much to come off.
Yeah, they're, they have to contain so much water as to not increase the water that is going to the surrounding property.
Like if a cup of water used to come off onto your land from their land, a cup of water should still come off from their land here.
Now, when the trees are all gone.
Well, they have to design a system that will accommodate that loss of the trees.
That's why I can't understand what else is actually keeping them. So they're not going to be able to do that.
Well, that was the plan before the plan that we saw, which then became.
Stop, stop, give your name and address if you want to speak.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Billy Bob.
I'm sorry?
Huh?
Your name?
Billy Bob.
Address?
Last name?
Last name Cannon. Clipper Cove.
What is the address on Clipper Cove?
One zero two one nine.
Thank you.
Jeff Williams, one oh two four three, Clipper Cove. Was there any studies done prior, for the water runoff prior to when they started building?
What do we have from that?
The, they submit the land coverage, the type of land coverage as a coefficient runoff. We check that to make sure it's in compliance. It's a wooded piece of land, there's a certain coefficient that's required when they change the land, coefficient is increased, they have to retain the water from the pre-existing condition to the new condition. So is there a study of the runoff? It's based through standards that have been established in some county, and that is basically the coefficient of runoff off wooded land and that. They specify what that is, and then they have to design to, now it's changed to a paved area with grass, they have to, that coefficient, and they have to manage all the water in between. And in fact, they can over-manage for more, for worse events. So a two-year pre-existing runoff has to be maintained up to twenty-five years, so they are over-managing the water. Like a major storm, they'll be released at no more going. And we're always checking to make sure they agree with the coefficients that are in the book, and they have to use the water, got to the water to the retention pond, and we can step down three more straight.
Three.
I don't find that, but look on.
Jonathan Boyer again, one oh two five nine, Clipper Cove. So I think, just stating the obvious, from my vantage point, I can tell you the water flow has increased since before the development was there. So from my standpoint, and I know that that's something that we're trying to address, but how quickly can we address that? Because he is still building houses, people are living in those houses, it seems like the development is proceeding. It, it feels to me like, you know, we, we need to stop this until this issue is addressed.
Well, we have, if you notice, we tabled their, their six, phase six.
Correct.
Six has been tabled. Billy Bob.
Billy Bob. Clipper Cove, one oh two one nine. So now with the retention pond, I know that down by me, I'm at like the top by Nautilus. There was supposed to be a retention pond there. I don't remember which phase of the plan it was, the one we saw or the two that we had no idea of. But that never showed up.
You right in the corner?
Yes.
The A-frame, front A-frame?
No, there's that, next one, me.
You know what's not left in the corner?
There, there's one that, there's no development, that retention pond will be for the next portion of the development.
The next phase.
This particular, the ponds to manage, all that has been developed have been in place. All of them are by going to the pond in the, whatever, southeast corners. Then there are ponds, next to Mr. DiCarlo, there's a pond, and there's also two ponds, at least a major pond, just over there. Those ponds manage the water that is developed area. And in the future, as they develop other sections, they are being required to stop the pond prior to development.
So they built a house there. Yeah. He was in. He was where the elbow is.
Yeah, that pond is going to go in, it will be built within the next.
If there's a house there.
That is a house there.
Yeah.
In the picture, so he's right.
So that phase is being built.
Yeah.
Or you tell me that one's not going to go in there? That house doesn't go?
I don't have a picture, I can't guess what.
I've got.
Those houses are built and occupied.
Yeah.
There's an illegal deck on this one.
You got, you got that from your buddy behind you. He didn't build it, that's what I'm saying.
No, of course he wouldn't build it. Yeah, I don't see how they can put a pond in there now, there's, there's houses there, there's people.
All right, I'll take it, we'll take a look at it. Look at this. Thanks. Mr. Yarmus.
Okay. First off, I have no knowledge of this stuff. Jimmy Yarmus, one oh three nine eight, Clipper Cove. I know in various other communities that I work in, if I'm taking down spot waters, I have to show where it's physically going to go. And where it's physically going to go has to be in place before I dump water to it. That's the typical, you know, the building inspectors go, "Look, oh." How can we have no retention ponds going in, but you're building houses so that you're dumping the water that's not supposed to be dumped because it has no place to dump to? Isn't that kind of putting the cart in front of the horse? And then all that water that does come shooting down through that downspout, whether it goes through a rainbow or whatever, causes additional erosion, which causes additional washout, additional soap moving, changes the flow of the grade. And at that point in time, irreparable damage has been done, and this guy can't even put in his retention pond if he's supposed to. Ah, sell the house there, maybe we'll just use his basement for a retention pond. But you know, that goes on, but then all of a sudden it gets lost and it works. I know as a contractor, I mean, I just had an inspection today for where my footer drains were going, where my downspout drains are going. Before, I could even backfill on you that. And it's got to be able to show where it's going, which is, in this particular case, down into a stream. But I have to put an extra sixty feet of pipe to make it pass the cove. How can all this continue to happen? Retention ponds aren't being built. They're not there to accept the water before the house even goes up. And at the same token, the water's obviously going someplace because even I'm looking over there across the street from me, and I'm seeing how much water is going through that ditch. And that's the highest I've ever seen that ditch in twenty-five years that I've been on the cove. So I'm, I'm kind of confused as to.
It's funny, you know, when I walked it the other day, like I was talking to Mr. Baker, and he told me, "It gets up really high," like years and years ago, and that's what creates the flood on, on Nautilus, you know, since the seventies, is what, what he was telling me. So.
That's in the hundred-year range of big thoughts.
I don't know. Been a few times since I've been here prior to, even since we had the last big one that we had, where we were pumping and stuff like that, there have been a few. You know, my, I'm trying to solve this. I, I look in, I mean, when you say that they're not doing this and you're not doing that, I know I got a building inspector, I'll talk to Mr. Rodick, make sure that, that he is doing his job.
Well, I'm just wondering how they can keep on digging, pouring foundations, putting footers in.
Well, we put six on. We, we put six on hold.
Okay.
And I thought I answered that question about fifteen minutes ago.
But if they, but if they don't have a retention pond where they put the house, where are they going to put the retention pond?
Well, we'll look and see if that's supposed to be a retention pond. I mean, my, my, actually, my main goal is to get an engineer for you, that, I mean, you have one. And this, have him say, "Yea, your name's..." I mean, if, if the engineer that you chose, I don't know, you want to say his name?
Joe Stock, it's the guy we use for the dam, he's a star.
All right. If Joe Stock comes and says, "Oh yeah, everything over there is above and beyond what it needs to be," are we done? Are we all right? Or is everybody happy?
I will be happy until those downspouts are tied in and put into a retention pond. That's where it belongs.
And that's, that's already set up to do that?
Yeah, yeah.
And ponds are drained.
So.
Yeah, they're draining their ponds in there, is it?
If it, if they drain your ponds into the bed ditch and it's the same amount that it's always been, they're allowed to do that. That's the, that's the federal guidelines.
Yeah, but they're drawn over private property.
With a pipe. As long as it's the same amount.
And who's measuring it?
Well, that's what the engineers, I'm gonna go back to the, to the Greek language of, of the coefficients, and they figure on that, and that's what, that's what Joe Stock will do, the same thing that he just said, that he did, Joe, Joe Stock will do the same thing and say, you know, I would've designed it this way, or said it that way, or, but.
Gene, just, so I'm, I'm crystal clear, when I talked to Dave, he said you guys check the calculations. You don't actually figure out how much retention area there should be, is that correct?
We verify the calculations are correct, and that all the coefficients are correct. So yes, we do verify that everything they submitted has been routed properly through. So we are checking their calculation and creating our proper.
But not actually confirming that there's the proper amount of retention area?
I, I, I don't understand the question. When, when, when I check something, I make sure that it meets all the proper standards. And the standard comes up and says, I need five thousand cubic feet of storage, then I make sure there's five thousand cubic feet of storage. That's what calculation is, that I check, and that's, that's where we're at. And with these new, you know, the ci, the, the city, they submitted plans for the subdivision, and they gave us calculations that showed that all the buildings were going into the retention pond. That was what we checked and what we approved. They came in after the fact, chose to take some of the rear roof drains and put them into rain barrels. We stopped, and Mr. Rode made the point that those back drains were not being tied into the storm system. We stopped the process, we said, you need to show us how you're going to manage that water. They came in and they said, we want a variance, go through the variance. This committee, this council has not given them, them a variance. I guess they're in the due diligence process, and that's what, I think, Mr. Carpenter says, they came in. They came to us and said, we wanna do this, and we said, you have to meet the code. It means put it into the storm system, make sure the runoff from the site is not increased, and make sure you have the water quality. So they have, are finishing up and submitting plans to do that. We've not accepted them, we've not finalized them. They have the calculations showing that in the retention pond, or just using figures, that they needed five thousand cubic feet. They made sure that they had that there. Then they came back when they were trying to release the rate, they said, okay, well, we're gonna hold back a little more water and directly release the, uh, back drains in. So now I need six thousand cubic feet. We said, that's fine, but we're not gonna give you a variance. You have to take the rear drains and manage the water into a storm system. That's what they submitted. Soon as that is done and approved, you know, we will make sure that the overall retention needed for the site is being managed and no increased water is running off. And secondly, that the rear drains are not dumping onto the ground, that they're going to a storm system, and that water is piped to a water quality pond and retention pond that, that can manage that water. So that, that's where we're at. So, the village has, they changed the midstream, they approved plans, and the retention showed everything going to a pond. They changed, when we discovered that three, three, three months ago, we told them they had to go there and to get the act struck, to get the right to dump directly onto the ground. They have not gotten the approval, so they've changed to go back to make, meet the code required to put in the storm system and treat the water. So that's where we're at, and we're close to getting that plan.
Thanks, Gene.
Everybody's planning on all of that.
I got her.
No, wait, wait, okay. She's, she's had, I've seen a blue hand up for a while.
Kelly Savanka, one oh two seven five, Clipper Cove. Um, I'd like to, you had mentioned you'd walked that area with Mr. Baker, who's over twenty-five.
Oh, no, I walked, I went through Mr. Baker's, I didn't want to make him walk. And then I crossed, you know where the two telephone poles are, it's real skinny? And then I walked all the way down, and I came across somebody's bridge. There's two bridges at the end, the very, yeah. Sorry.
That's alright.
Do you have the gated one or ungated one? I went to the ungated. There is this gated. Oh, I went to the ungated.
So, well, I'd like to agree that this is not the first time that we've seen the water high. It's the frequency and the fact that it's a regular Saturday afternoon rainstorm fills it up, not the, you know, the big one once a year. I mean, it's, you know, any time it rains, it, it's, it's filling up considerably. And I think the frustration of the group is that we've had, these ongoing issues have been going on for more than two years now. And we see it getting worse, not better, which is why you're seeing a frenzy of us, as we're frowning. We are, we're watching the water come on down on us, so we're begging for your assistance. Mr. Esser, I understand your calculations. Our frustration is that we know, and we're telling you, they're not coming close to following this. And that we are asking you with urgency to please walk their maps and see what they're putting in there. It, it's horrifying to me that we are telling you that there's a house or a retention pond should be, and nobody knows that, well, it's right back, you know, part of the line from where we're standing. And, and so we're asking council to be very much more proactive, and asking the, demanding that the building inspector really look at each building that's going in and make sure that it's not, that it's already been approved, and that they're not putting it where something else was supposed to be. So we're really here begging you for your help. And, uh, Mr. Esser, I'd just like to remind you that you were for all of us. And I would at least expect you to be polite to me on the phone when I call you. And I think, as a group, we expect that, you're at the meeting as well. We understand you made calculations, but if they don't follow them, we can't be thinking and pretending that those calculations are gonna work.
Okay, I just wanna continue on what she said, because that was great, and I was thinking the same thing. I can't follow.
Why did you say that the first time?
No, 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 it's just that the calculations, the, the calculations are amazing. I don't know at which point of the phase the calculations are. Are they, where there was a retention pond, or where there's a house where it was supposed to be? And, and just like how.
One second, I, I find it hard to believe, but I will look at the plans to, and that there's a house where a retention pond's supposed to be, but, but believe me, we'll get, we'll take care of that.
Well, initially, there wasn't even supposed to be a house until you crossed my two telephone poles, so that's where I landed.
Okay.
So, there wasn't supposed to be a house other than halfway behind my neighbor. That was the original plan. That was going to be a whole big pond there at the end. I was gonna basically be, uh, there's gonna be a pond in my backyard, not three houses. So, with, with the calculations, at which point is it? And to hear that things keep changing by then, I mean, without an officer ganking me out here for what I said, I, what I wanted to do, when I found out what the plan was changed from what it was originally, I would imagine you guys should wanna kick him there too, for constantly changing the plans on you.
And that's why Phase Six is being held up. Andrew Gordon, one oh.
Wait, 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 wait. I'm trying to get people that have a chance.
No, I just, Dan Georges, one zero two nine one, Clipper Cove. Mayor, you mentioned before something about the, maybe it wasn't you, about the, the blue dye water. And you said it wasn't copper sulfate. Well, I don't know if you took a sample, or if one of us took a sample and actually tested it, but I can't imagine why you would dump this blue dye into a retention pond.
Because it, it kills algae. Okay, but, I'm gonna explain it to you. I spent twenty-seven years in the UAW as, as, one of them was as a safety rep. The first thing I asked for was the MSDS sheet, of what chemical you were putting in the place. So I called the gentleman who runs the whole program, here's who does it, AquaDoc. AquaDoc said, the MSDS sheet, I can get it for you, that it's just straight blue dye. I've used it here myself, they make, it's called Blue Dye for Ponds. And it, and it covers over a layer so that the sun ultraviolet rays don't let the algae grow. And the only time you'd use copper sulfate is if you've got a massive algae problem that you wanna kill. So, I might even still have some like out in the fire station, because, you know, the pond that you pulled into here, I tried to, I tried to dye it blue, but there's so much leaves in there and stuff that it came out green.
Right. And, uh, one other, okay, that's, that's good to know, Blue Dye number four, I'd like to see the material safety data sheet on that. The other, the other question I had was about the, the actual property where they're putting the, dumping the water. I'm not sure if, you know, if, let's say it doesn't turn out to be just a blue dye, let's say they really use the copper sulfate. It, it is going downstream to pretty much everyone's property that lives on Clipper Cove on that one side. And, you know, that, that's something that shouldn't be happening. And, you know, I, I'm sure that, you know, if you find out that they just gave you a, you just went online and grabbed a data sheet on.
I didn't do that, I talked to AquaDoc. That's who, that's who takes care of it.
Okay, AquaDoc?
AquaDoc.
Right, AquaDoc.
I mean, they're, they're taking, they're, they're actually a rather large company, and they're taking their reputation on it. There, there's no, there's no purpose or reason for them to use copper sulfate.
Okay, well, that's good to know. Thank you.
Chris Corrigan, thirty-eight oh nine Nautilus. That sounds like another person out of Clipper Cove's. My concerns are the same. It sounds like I'm just gonna go over facts and play Captain Outuse here. It sounds like we've got a bunch of sliths living in the neighborhood doing the work of what appears to be the engineer and the, uh, the engineers for sale. So, that being said, if it comes down to the retention ponds are not where they're sent, they're supposed to be. If there's homes built upon it, who's responsible for that? In other words, Donald Trump, who's getting fired?
I'll take it up with Mr. Olson to make sure it's done correctly.
Ultimately, if that's true, somebody's not doing their job. And, and who is that? Who's responsible for making sure the retention ponds are where they're supposed to be? Who's responsible for approving the house that's built on a piece of land that it wasn't supposed to be built on? And who's being held accountable?
Well, that would be the engineer and the building inspector.
And the planning commission and so on. And as, there were preliminary plans that were presented, that showed the basic layout of the site. As they go into a phase, they analyze the site, look at the wetlands, look at the whole situation, and they come back with a plan. They might have moved, I don't, from the preliminary plan to the final plan, our concurrence is to make sure that they're not increasing the number of houses, and secondly, that everything is designed to go into retention. So the actual location of the retention might move, but again, the, all the criteria of the standard had been met. On Phase Six, as an example, they had many more houses posed for Phase Six. They had to go out there and review the wetlands, and wetlands have a tendency to grow as a, over the years, they get larger. When they came in to do Phase Six, they found the wetland parameters, and Ohio EPA said, no, you cannot build in those areas. So they scaled back the number of houses in Phase Six to avoid the wetlands and make sure it was in compliance with EPA regulations. So we go to planning commission, they show us the routing of pond that's going to manage the water, they show us the layout, it substantially meets, but actually was decreasing the number of units that were going in there. So planning commission then looks at it and confirms and approves it. And then we go through and evaluate all the calculations and make sure that it meets the standards. So, if, if preliminary plan came in and said, we're gonna put a retention pond over here, and physically, we can get to the final design, it moved, as long as the area that we've been built is then retained and managed, then it moves right. And I think that's probably what, when the project was supposed to be a pond here, and they decided to change it because physically in the, in the design layout, it made better sense to put the pond in a different location. But there, there are minor changes from the preliminary to the final preliminary. For years, for a number of years, was gone through and finally approved, the basic concept was basically approved. And then when they get to the final design, there are some changes. And I think the planning commission understands that, like Phase Six, instead of having thirty, forty houses, they were only able to get twenty-nine. Again, the wetland grew, again, that's why these things are minor changes. So there's a general concept plan of where they think everything's going, and then there's a final design plan, as they design sanitary storm water and roadway pattern, and evaluate the actual limits of the wetlands and all. So, there have been changes in the different phases, and in most cases, it has downsized the number of houses. And, uh, but that's probably why there might be a change. If you saw a preliminary plan from five years ago, and you say it doesn't quite look like that, good chance it hasn't because in the final design there were some criteria that's made them modify it. But it was, the general concept wasn't being followed.
One second, is there anybody else wants to talk besides Billy Bob? I mean, somebody that hasn't got a chance to talk, that's fine. No? Okay, go ahead.
I'm just less likely to believe that it's bad planning than it was hot foots in the door, now we do what we want. Also, it sounds like bad calculations. And to reiterate, the whole, like, why isn't, like, I mean, I, I can, I can spit the distance of Reminderville. We're not asking for greater Cleveland to be managed or monitored. It's, it's the only development going on here. It's a temple called Reminderville.
It's not the only development going on here.
In, in Reminderville?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, reminderville is how big?
I got, you know, Albert, you know that over the past eight years, roughly, it's, we probably average forty to fifty new home starts a year.
Well, I'm not talking about homes, I'm just talking about somebody just, you, you don't even have to like have two minutes between driving.
And this year, we'll have about seventy new home starts, because you gotta take everything you have up here and, uh, this is all Reminderville too, that you see going in by the plaza, Liberty Bridges and everything.
Oh, I'm aware.
And there's another, there's another two hundred and eighty, I think, that are, that are on the schedule.
I'm, I'm just saying, square size of Reminderville, it's a pinprick. It's not hard to man, I wouldn't think it'd be hard for an engineer to say, I'll stop by there once a day. And heck, once a week would've found that this stuff was going wrong.
I will, I will, um, address everything that you've asked for tonight. I'm gonna start with Mark getting on, having Joe get ahold of me.
I just have one other comment, Sandy Hodge, one oh three one oh, Clipper Cove. You know the culvert there with the ditches, I mean, just we get those, what, for, probably longer? Anyway.
Probably seven?
My point is just that it really needs cleaned out on a regular basis, especially with all the building going on. And that might have a little bit of better flow in there, but, I mean, I walk my dog every day, and I look in that ditch, and it's, it's filled with silt, dirt, sticks, plants. I mean, so you're not gonna get good water flow if it's not cleaned out on a regular basis. And usually I do call the city and ask them about it, and after about the third phone call, it's usually done, but.
We're gonna have the community to take care of the same ones that did, with somebody we was just talking about earlier, about the front of the, when you pull into the shores, the ditching that they did.
Yeah, I got one, it's dirty too.
And we just dug out them.
Okay, okay.
Remember we used to have to put up signs every time you went through? This last rain, I didn't have to put any signs up that said, water, that section right there.
Regarding those culvert time Clipper, you might wanna wait until the building's all done back there, because it was gonna silt back in.
You know, when I was there Sunday morning, as it comes down Clipper behind, it really comes back. The water I see holding up is like behind Porky's House, that direction. That's where, that water was, it was just like sitting. And, um, I don't know how to, I really do not have a clue, and, and gene them up, and I'm gonna look at it, how to get that water moving down through those culverts. been, I've looked at it, how to get that water moving down to those culverts.
That was just cleaned up too, I think, five years ago.
Yeah, yeah, that was.
Five, six years ago.
I don't know how great a job. It's just hard to get the fall in there because of how flat the land is.
Yeah.
But, but you're right, I looked at it and, and sometimes I go down, there's a tree going across or railroad tile one time. So I, I ask service department to take a look at it every week. I'll be quick. Yeah, that, yeah, that culvert, only water that's flowing through one of the four pipes. So yeah, definitely needs to be restructured. And I noticed like from the street, looks like it's coming down, it's starting to, the street water is going down and there's kind of a road in that-
Yeah.
In, in that section, so that's Noronius sons will deal with.
My other question is just about measurements. Now, when you do measurements, are you just looking at the plans and measuring or do you, are you physically going through the site, taking measurements?
Oh, I think they just do it by plan.
I, I know. What type of measurements, sir? I can't.
Well, you're saying they, they submit a plan for how they're going to retain their water and you look at the measurements they give you. I assume there has to be measurements involved in how big the retention pond is, where they're planning on flowing the water, what the elevation level is. Do you then physically go out and verify, "Okay, the retention pond is this wide, is this deep?"
Yes, sir.
Jeff Williams, one oh two four three Clipper Cove. I'd just kind of like to know what kind of money they're slipping him to, the builders slipping him to approve everything they do.
Yes, yes. Sir, that's the most unprofessional thing I've ever heard in my life. And you are, you are really out of line.
Jeff Williams, one oh two four three Clipper Cove.
Sir, if you don't like the development, I can understand that, okay?
No, I don't like your answers, the one I don't like.
I don't-
You beat around the bush, you don't have a solid answer for everything, you, you just beat around the bush. Every answer you've given this evening, you haven't, it hasn't been solid, you just beat around the bush.
That's your opinion, sir. That's your opinion.
Oh, yeah, no, what, that's, there we go. I got a little back up there.
You know what, sir? That's your opinion.
All right, let me move one, listen, I got a couple of ones to do.
You might not like the development. I can't say I like the development.
I spoke my mind.
But it is, it is, I can only do, as a council tells me to do, if they bring in a plan that is approved, planned by the city, I have to manage it and evaluate it and make sure that it meets the standards of the county. And that's what I do. I've done this for thirty-five years. And I, you know, there's a lot of people who dislike me. And one person who dislikes me is John Evanson. And I asked, asked the mayor, because I have held his feet to the fire many times and he's not, not one of my friends. I do not care for the gentleman, but I'm going to make sure he meets all the standards. And this situation is that occurring with the direct flow onto the ground, he was caught and he was stopped and that's why we're going through these issues. And you want the issue resolved and I want the issue resolved. So we're trying to work toward an end there. But your, your comments are out of line and, and I totally think it's poor taste on your part, sir.
All right.
You have a right to your opinion.
All right. Again, I got a council meeting to get to. I can attest that given Mr. Evanson has come real close to blows a couple of times over stock stop.
Kim Mullins, three three six seven five Nautilus, Travis.
Is it Corky? Is that right?
Yeah, Corky is my name.
Just making sure.
Good, yep.
I didn't know if it was Corky or Corky. I wanted to get it straight.
No, it's Corky. Just my neighbor's house. I was told it was condemned-
It is condemned.
But I've been told that they, they're going to be putting it up for sale. I saw a truck there from a, what was it? It was a Compliance something Technologies and so I was confused. I mean-
We, we have to check for asbestos. You condemn it? In, in order for me to get the federal funds, that's that house and there's one on Ensign. I have to condemn it, make sure it's condemned. So I had the county come out, they condemned it, went through the black mold and all this stuff. Now, the next thing is you got to have people come in, make sure there isn't any asbestos or if there is, then it's got to be paid to remove asbestos before it can be done. Is there asbestos in that? Probably not, probably not old enough for it, but it's just what the federal guidelines say I have to do before I do it. Now, the one gentleman that owned it, Mr. Ratters, is that right? And he's kind of given some brief fact that he thinks he can still fix it, he's not fixed it. We know that. And Gina and I spoke about trying to use it somehow to create an area to retain water to try to keep flooding app, from not happening on Nautilus.
Okay, so the, the neighbor said some people were out looking at it, taking pictures. They said they had a date, they still owned it. And then I started thinking, well, say, the guy Mickey, who was the owner of the house, he bought it for forty thousand and say, "We were going to buy it for less than that." Then he, I'm just thinking that the money doesn't gel and then the bank maybe stole his own, own it. So I was confused.
I guess I'm kind of taking it by eminent domain, basically, right? How, how do you view that whenever I say condemned and I'm taking it?
We're not actually taking the property. We're actually just condemning the building that is on it and it's going to be razed. As to the fixtures, that's part of the process that's under this grant, that we're getting grant money to demolish the residence. And part of the process, we have to take pictures each step away before the raising occurs, during the raising and afterwards. And all the pictures have to be taken from the same spot with some landmark in the picture. As far as the asbestos goes, it's required that a study is done, if any is found, then it has to be removed pursuant to whatever guidelines that they have to comply with there. They have to go through each of these steps prior to the condemnation.
And I only have till the end of the year to do it. I actually got an extension from, from the Summit County to, to continue it, for the state considering.
So the plan is for it to come down prior to the end of the year?
I would hope so.
Us too.
It's like basically, I, I, from what, from top to bottom, I don't think I can get another extension, that it has to be done by the end of the year. Is this the house on Nautilus that always floods?
Yeah.